Third 2020 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us this evening. And this time, I would ask that Ms. La Magna knew the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas and all exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are in the lobby. Although persons are strongly encouraged to submit online public comment forums during the state of emergency, persons may visit City Hall during a public meeting to make public comments on propositions coming before the City Commission Agenda for a Vote, subject to the city procedures and all social distancing requirements established by the governor's executive orders. The commission chambers will be closed to the public. The City Hall lobby will be equipped with a lectern and a microphone for public comment, and the audio/video feed to the City Commission chambers. Yellow forms will be provided for persons who wish to make public comment. Persons may enter the lobby to speak on an item before the City Commission at the appropriate times when called upon for two and a half minutes. The lobby will also have limited defined area with social distancing for persons waiting to make public comment. In addition, the exterior entryway of City Hall will be equipped with a loudspeaker for persons waiting for permission to enter to make public comments due to space limitations in the lobby. Persons may also monitor public meetings from their iPhone, iPad, or other electronic device on the city's website, and enter City Hall for public comment at the appropriate times when called upon. Persons who have finished speaking or not intending to speak on a matter coming before the City Commission will not be permitted to remain in City Hall. All persons must comply with social distancing requirements while at City Hall, such as by remaining at least six feet apart, and use of facial masks is encouraged to combat the spread of COVID-19. Item number seven is the opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this section. Items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under item number 10 are also open for public comment, and citizens may speak at that designated time. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above, the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You'll be told when your time has expired. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order if you obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. I will remind everyone to please silence their cellphones and their wireless devices at this time. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
And Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Traeger. Commissioner Delgado.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Gillland.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Reed.
Second.
Thank you for that motion and that second. A motion by Commissioner Gillland, second by Commissioner Delgado. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. At this time, we will have our invocation led by Commissioner Traeger, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Henry.
Heavenly Father, bless us all and bless the city of Daytona Beach and its residents and there. Take special care of our first responders and all those who work in the grocery stores and who maintain our city for us. Help us through this perilous time, not only with the pandemic, but with all the rioting, put peace in the hearts of the people that they can go ahead and make changes that are necessary in a calm and pleasant manner. Bless those who serve us overseas and take special care. Give us the wisdom to do things right for our city as best we know how, and help us. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the May 20th, 2020 business meeting of the City Commission. And that was a motion by Commissioner Gillland and a second by Commissioner May.
All right, we'll take that motion and the second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Now move on to our agenda. There are any changes our city manager will address them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're going to pull agenda item 8K from the agenda. It will not be, we have some additional work needs to be done with that item. We're going to add to the consent agenda 8T, an agreement for the maintenance of right-of-way and public improvements between the city, Bayberry Lakes Homeowners Association, and Massey Property Owners Association. And then add to administrative discussion items, item 10C, Code of Ordinances, text amendment, mobile food vendors.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
All right, we'll take a motion from Commissioner Gillland and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, now move on to our agenda. Item number six, presentations. We have no presentations tonight. Item number seven, this is public comments by people addressing the City Commission. I've had no speakers sign up prior to the meeting through the online comment section, and I do have one speaker who signed up for this consent agenda, Mr. Ken Strickland. He's speaking on item 8E.
Whenever I'm ready. Ken Strickland, 1208 North Halifax. 8E, we're talking about the construction contract to dredge and redo the seawall along Riverfront Park there for the tune of almost, well, we'll call it $3.2 million. We've talked about this many times, that there needed to be some repairs, and there have not been any repairs. And now that we have leased it for 50 years, suddenly we're going to spend the $3.2 to repair and replace the seawall along there. That seems like a lot of money to be on the consent agenda, and you add that to what we've spent down on Beach Street narrowing the street, we're north of $7 million. That's quite a bit of money to have spent down there, especially with this $3.2 with no discussion, and it just being thrown up here on the consent agenda. Things like this, in my opinion, in times of the COVID-19 that we have going on, and the senseless killing of George over there with the, with the, the whole thing, this should be done when citizens can come here and talk about it, and it can be done with, with some discussion rather than just throwing it up because it makes you guys look really shady, in my opinion. If y'all are okay with that, I guess this is going to go on through anyway. But you wonder why we don't trust you? This is one of the reasons. $3.2 million on the consent agenda is, should be, that's unheard of. That's, that's ridiculous and shouldn't be done this way. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks this evening. Do we have any other comments or questions regarding this item?
I had no other speaker sign up for the consent agenda.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Aye.
Wait, I don't think we don't, we don't have a motion yet.
We don't have a motion, and I'd like to make a comment on that item that the speaker just spoke of. If you review the backup, there's a very thorough process that was gone through. It looks like there were about a dozen or so different companies that bid on it. You know, there's no issue here. That, that's simply not warranted, the commentary that we just heard.
Also, as it relates to the downtown project, this has been going on for quite a while now. It's been up for discussion. It was part of everything. Furthermore, the gentleman's name was George Floyd. So if you're going to bring up somebody's name, the man who died was George Floyd. You should know that name if you bring it up.
Good point. Very good point. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Very good point. Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gillland, and a second from Commissioner Delgado. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Is six zero for the record? Moving on to item number nine, which is the public hearings. Item number nine A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Tamoca Independent Living PD rezoning, First Amendment to the Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Tamoca Independent Living Plan District Agreement located west of Tamoca Farms Road and north of First Baptist Parkway to reduce the minimum required caliper inches for shade trees and small trees within their required scenic thoroughfare overlay landscape yard along Tamoca Farms Road, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Second.
I think that was Commissioner Traeger.
Yes.
And a motion from Commissioner Traeger, and a second from Commissioner Gillland. Do we have any comments or questions?
I do have Mr. Steve Boswell here on behalf of the applicant if you have any questions.
Have any questions for Mr. Boswell? Okay. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. There are no further discussion or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Moving on to item number nine B, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Land Development Code text amendment, amending Articles 4, 5, and 6. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, amending Article 4, Section 4.7.2.5, revising modified use standards applicable to the development projects within the redevelopment beachside hotel mixed-use RDB-1 zoning district. Amending Article 5, Section 5.2.2.19.D, revising standards for gas stations as principal use. Amending Article 5, Section 5.3.2.4, revising standards for non-residential canopies as accessory structures. Amending Article 6, Section 6.3.8.4, revising minimum width for pedestrian walkways. Amending Article 6, Section 6.9.F, revising maximum height of outdoor lighting. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Slow move.
Slow move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado, and a second from Commissioner Gillland.
I have no speakers for this item.
Okay, no speakers. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, six zero.
Okay. Well, now move on to our administrative items. Item number 10. Item 10A is the City Manager's Office Resolution of Support, Ortona Elementary School Site, Volusia County K-8, K-8 School Resolution. A resolution supporting approval by the Volusia County School Board to merge Osceola Elementary located in Ormond Beach and Ortona Elementary School located in Daytona Beach, and for the construction of a new school at the current location for Ortona Elementary School in Daytona Beach, and providing an effective date. Second.
Who was the motion? Was it Traeger?
Yes.
Okay, and May was the second?
Yes.
Okay.
And I do have.
Do we have a speaker?
I do have a speaker for this item, Mr. John Nicholson.
Okay, before John comes up, well, John, go ahead, John.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranberry Avenue. Years ago, this was discussed. Those of us on the beachside would prefer to have a K-8 at Ortona. We have three elementary schools, no junior high on the beachside whatsoever. The idea of normal schools, and I taught for 20 years, is you would have two or three elementary schools feeding into a junior high, two or three junior highs feeding into a high school. We have two high schools, one junior high, and six elementary schools. We're missing several junior highs. If you remember years ago, they bulldozed the two white junior highs so that everybody would go to one singular, all right? It's no longer the case. If this happens, what will happen is we will get one elementary school on beachside, and Ormond will get one elementary school, and Ortona will close, all right? It is not fair. If you look at the numbers, what happens to public property and homes when you take away their schools? You saw that in the junior high. You will see that when we remove Ortona as an elementary school. That is a nice neighborhood around Ortona. It is wealthy. To destroy it by taking away its school is not in our best interest. I understand you're saying that we would prefer, okay? It's not going to be the case. I would ask you to add to that, that Ortona be a K-8, that we have a, we keep Ortona, we keep Osceola, we keep Long Street, we keep all of them, but what we do is we add a K-8 at Ortona. The people on the beachside deserve a junior high. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Nicholson, that, that's just not going to happen. But you can go ahead. I'm just going to address your comments and, and, you know, it's going to be a K-8. They've already determined that it would be a K-8 school.
Where?
The decision is not for them to determine. I'm, I'm, I'm through. You don't have to comment anymore.
Okay.
I'm just telling you a little bit and some other things. They've already determined that this will be a K-8 site, and it will merge the two schools. The decision now is to determine which site will be the location of the new K-8 school. And it is our preference, and I believe in, obviously, in our best interest if it remain at Ortona. It is the better of the two sites for a number of reasons. The soil is better, the location is better in terms of the various number of students that have to travel, and clearly Daytona Beach has been, I won't say the victim, but we're the ones who, who lost Bonner Elementary, and it's time that, you know, our students in our city, you know, be appreciated as it relates to being a neighborhood school. And so they've decided to keep the K-8. Hopefully, it'll maintain some of its charm. Right now, they will, they're making decisions about what types of programs will go in the school, and that will also help them to decide which site is better. But certainly, we believe that this, our site is the better of the two, and I think most of the county members for the school board concur, at least I hope they do.
May I?
Any other comments, anyone else regarding this item?
Yes, I should have been following this, and there's some people in that neighborhood I've spoken to. They would also like to kind of hold on to that school site because my concern is if the school should move, what does, what can the county do with that property? And they can do anything they want. They could leave it vacant, they could put whatever they wanted to put in that area. But in general, the school is a good location there. What I would encourage Daytona Beach residents to do, who have an interest in this, and even if you don't have children, is write a letter to the school board and write a letter to the county. Because right now in Ormond Beach, that's what their residents are doing, and they're lobbying hard to have both locations merge into the Ormond Beach area. So I encourage you to please send a letter, send an email, contact your representative. Thank you.
And that was the reason I asked the manager to put this on the agenda, because we need to make certain that it's very clear from the city's perspective. But I would also say, send a letter to all board members so that each of the board member knows, or at least if you do email, just email and copy on your email, because we wanted to know that we want, we're fighting for our, our area, and we want to keep the school. Thanks. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other comment on this item? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
We'll now move on to item number 10B, which is Development and Administrative Services Planning Board Division, Planning Division, Discussion on Plan Development Process, Amending Sections of the Land Development Code, Article 3, and Review Procedures. Mr., I believe it was Mr. Jim Morris to report.
While he's coming up, I'll, this was something I've been talking with staff about for, for a while. You know, we've, we've got golf communities. We saw, we, we see what's going on in Indigo. Unfortunately, they aren't, they aren't a PD, so this won't help them in the same way we could help others. But in Pelican Bay, a, quite a while ago, we've got, we had a developer come and, and speak with Mr. Morris and some others about the possible redevelopment of the South Course of Pelican Bay. When the C-Big was looking at acquiring the LPGA golf courses, there were some concerns raised by Commissioner Traeger about, you know, what they could or may or may not do with, with the golf course property, and how that might affect the people who live in, in that neighborhood. And what we're trying to do here is we've always sort of had a practice of allowing input from the folks in those neighborhoods, and what I've asked is that we, that we codify that within the land development code. So this is, the discussion tonight is to kind of talk about what the proposal is from staff and, you know, why it, why it's written the way that it is.
Mayor, if you'd be. Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager, and I'll follow up with Ms. Gillland, summary. So there's, there's three projects in particular that have our attention, but others will follow. In respect to PDs, they almost always have associations because at a minimum, stormwater ponds require property owner associations. And we've got old PDs in Daytona Beach. I think that the, one of the golf course developments is an older one, and there isn't any particular rights assigned to an association in that particular one. In Pelican Bay, there's an association there. And there is some language in the document, but it's really not clearly spelled out. And so you've got a circumstance where people come in and buy, certainly have an interest in what happens in their neighborhoods. And so what we've done, as it relates to PDs that are already approved, which are effectively contracts, we provide for notice to the associations to be aware of a proposed amendment. They actually will get the content of the amendment, as well as a summary from the proponent of what the amendment is supposed to do, and let the folks have a chance early on. As soon as the application is filed, the people in the association will also get the notice. So they have the opportunity to make a representative statement for the association and the people that have an interest in the neighborhood, and those are going to be folks that are occupants there. As it relates to future PDs, we've got language that is more prospective, that was drafted by the city attorney's office, to deal with establishing association rights to participate, comment on, and so on in those debates as somebody comes forward in later years to propose an amendment to a PD. It's natural to think that you will have amendments to PDs because times change, desires change. As a matter of fact, from golf course perspective, you've seen less demand for golf, and, and you have this incipient demand to try and reuse the property. But that may disaffect some other people. For instance, if you look at the one on 95 where the manager lives, you've got fairways that go down in between the homes. And if you look at the fairways, they're actually perfectly situated from a cul-de-sac perspective to put more homes in. So where you bought with an intention to look at a golf course view, you conceivably could wind up looking out your fence into someone else's backyard. And the appropriate use for the property is something the commission has to have the opportunity to consider. Consider what the restrictions are in that particular PD. Consider whether or not there were particular promises made to purchasers at the time they purchased that other people aren't able to just supersede those. All those things become a part of existing adopted PDs. Future PDs, we've got a clearer definition to go into the code that hasn't existed before. So that the idea is that you have an opportunity for those interested parties and affected parties to get notice early on, the opportunity to participate and tell you what they think is appropriate and compatible to allow to occur, or what you should not allow to occur in their particular neighborhood. It always becomes a zoning decision. That power is vested in the City Commission through the police power that it has. There is not a veto right for an association or an individual. And that's also important because if you gave a veto right, you very well could have positive changes that could occur vetoed by someone that for some reason just says no. So we're trying to find a balance in that. The documents that you have have been drafted for discussion purposes so that you can give us direction as to what you would like to see or not see. And that would include the planning staff, as well as the city attorney's office, and we have jointly worked to draft the documents that you see. Mr. Jack and I have had a fair amount of conversation back and forth, just trying to find a balance that we think might be responsive to both prospective cases, which would be new PDs, and former cases, which would be existing PDs that people may be seeking to amend.
So really, what we're trying to do here is make sure that the, the, the folks that are affected by this, and in, within PDs, within these large neighborhoods, there are, you know, it's more than the folks that are within a few hundred feet of the, of the site that are going to be affected by their, to their communities. And, you know, this is, what we're seeking for here, what I'm asking for, is that we do this so that it will give, really give a voice to those folks and give them a role within the process to make sure that they're informed and have an opportunity to voice their support or their objection.
The PDs are conceptual hole when they're created, and they certainly, from the distance of notice that you ordinarily would get for adjacent property, they're much bigger than that in most cases. And when you have a conceptual hole that has components of access, recreation, different housing types, and so on, it isn't fair to say, I will sculpt out a corner of this thing that was a conceptual hole, and just deal with that and ignore the rest. So the object is to have the conceptual hole that was created from one property owner selling to all the people that now live there, being able to have input and try to guide what they think is appropriate for their community, not just for that chunk of land that's near a few houses.
I remember going to that meeting, am I on? I remember going to that meeting at the police department, I think it was Indigo, and just how, I guess marginalized the residents felt, who'd been living there for a while, and people had just bought in, not knowing what was really going on.
Yes.
So I guess my question is, how long, with regard to the rights of this citizens group or this committee, the HOA, how, how much time have you spent figuring out the right approach, the right language? How long has that taken you?
Yeah, it's, well, I'm, I'm not answering quickly because once we decided to take steps, we had thought for quite some time about the difficulties and the things that are attendant to it, and how to address it. But there wasn't an instantaneous solution to it. So there is just the idea and recognition that something needs to be done. There was actually a fair amount of time spent both going through the Indigo documents and considering whether or not there was an association, and there's a mixture of association types in Indigo, and whether or not there were rights attached to those properties because of promises made in real estate sales, and also an effort to have help from folks at Indigo with their counsel to try and show what rights they might have. And that took some time. So in the end, we really didn't get much from that, and then we had the other question come up, a Pelican Bay, which has just been an inquiry, that's it, and that was at TRT. It wasn't just with me. I attended the TRT. And we've just recognized that these are going to happen with other PDs as well. So from the perspective of, once we elected to move forward, I would say the drafting time and so on, the commission gave us some direction in terms of what it wanted, and we really, you know, put pen to paper probably after that until this point tonight.
And then, does this give, so am I understanding that right now, when things happen, when we have changes in the plan, that they don't have to meet with the HOA or the residents? Things can just sort of move forward? This is before?
There is a required neighborhood meeting.
Okay, so there is a required neighborhood meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Neighborhood meetings, and there's a standard for measuring what the neighborhood is. As I said, those dimensions are not typically the same as what you'd have in a PD because the PDs are so much larger. When you consider how big Indigo is, or how big Pelican Bay is, 300 feet, 500 feet, probably 1,000 feet, isn't significant enough to get to the community. And, and even then.
I understand now.
So even then, they're not required to meet, but they are required to give notice and content of what the amendment is. For instance, I could say to you, well, my idea does A, B, and C. You look at what I've written, and you say, wait a minute, what you've written doesn't do A, B, and C, it does E, F, and G, but you told me something different, which is why we're saying not only submit your summary, submit the exact content of what will go to public hearing and be considered by the commission, so that the people considering the idea will have the opportunity to interpret for themselves what they think it means, not take someone else's idea of what that person, who is a proponent, says that it means.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would ask this to.
Well, I would ask this to Police Commissioner Traeger. It certainly pleases me, I think it's a great idea to do this. And I'm certain the residents in those communities are looking very happy with this change.
Well, we, we hope so, Mayor. And of course, as a public hearing, they will have the opportunity to comment and make further suggestions if that's what they think should be done. If the commission directs that we should move forward essentially with what's before you tonight, that's what would come forward unless you have suggested changes. Or something comes up in the process of bringing it back for schedule where it looks like there's a necessary change that should be made. This is not locked in. This is just to get direction from the commission to bring something to you for a public hearing.
So it sounds like everybody's in favor of moving forward with something,
Yeah.
you know, in this vein. What would be the next step from here? Because it will need to go to Planning Board, correct?
And the City Attorney's reply is that would be correct. So it's the normal process for amending the Land Development Code. And we'll go through the Planning Board, then come back to you for two readings. And we'll, I think what will happen now is we'll take what we've got, put that into form for the Planning Board to consider, report to you the changes, if any, the Planning Board suggests, and bring something back to you. Probably it looks a lot, lot like what you see now for consideration at public hearing. That is barring some information that comes to us that makes us do something different than what you see. Because we have gone over this a fair amount and gone back and forth and so on, trying to find the right way to get there.
So it's historically been our practice that when the city begins to consider a change like this to the Land Development Code, that any application that comes in after the process has been initiated, which we're doing tonight, that it would be, that this rule, these rules would apply to any application from that point forward. Is that, is that accurate?
I will yield the City Attorney's opinion, but I think that is an accurate statement.
Yes, that, that sounds accurate. And I think we'd have to look at any applications that come in to see how that might apply.
Just because this is going to take, to get to Planning Board than to come to us for two readings, this is going to take a little while. But I just want to make sure everybody knows there's really, you know, based on the way this works, there's not going to be an opportunity for somebody to try and slide in an application quickly between now and the time that we would approve it on second reading, you know, provided we take that route.
Okay, and then I have a question regarding that. Do we have any people right now waiting that's going to impact? And do we have to notify them that something is happening?
No, ma'am. There's no pending amendments either at Pelican Bay or any of the other developments.
Okay, so nobody is impacted by us doing this this evening, correct? Moving forward.
They're only impacted then if they'll now need to comply with it because you're in progress.
Okay.
Right, the procedures that we're adopting really just codify much of what we've already been doing in terms of your standard for review for PD amendments. The only additional things we're adding to the review process are the notice requirements to the HOA and to the homeowners. So, you know, we may be able to just move forward with that sort of compliance, without holding up projects. So again, I'll take a look at it as, as they come in. We certainly don't want to hold up projects as long as they comply with the proposed standards. So we'll take a look at that.
The focus is to avoid surprise to the people that already live there and not have them be aware as soon as possible of what's pending or potentially pending in their neighborhood.
I guess I have a crazy question for you. The question is, you know, when I, when you purchase a home, is it up to the Realtor at all to notify people of what's going on? Is there any standard there? Or do they just, is that up to the individual to do the due diligence and ask the right questions?
I'm not going to get into the Realtor question, but I would say that as a buyer, you've got a due diligence obligation. You probably have counsel. You have title companies that you work with. And the documents pertaining to your rights should be a part of the title search and attached to it. So there's opportunity to see it. Realtors are trying to sell the property, so that's probably not your best source for information anyway.
If Realtor misrepresents the facts when they sell you a house, you do have recourse against the Realtor.
We do?
The, the buyer would have recourse against the Realtor.
Okay.
If, if the Realtor misrepresented something material during the course of the sale.
Okay, thank you.
Stand down, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Very well done, you, great, great, great work. We, that concludes our agenda.
Actually, we have one more item that was added to the agenda, the 10C. That was part of the agenda changes. Item number 10C is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Code of Ordinances text amendment, mobile food vendors. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the City Code, Section 103-2, to revise mobile food vending license conditions, repeal City Code, Section 103-3, which provided for an automatic repeal of the City Code, Chapter 103, effective June 19, 2020, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Just one more time on that, just one second.
Mm-hmm.
The sunset.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When we adopted our permitting requirement
Thanks.
for mobile food vending a year ago, we built in an automatic sunset provision. Now, now it is sunsetting on its own terms. The proposed amendment would remove the sunset clause and allow for renewals of those licenses. And so this is on first reading, of course, but that's what would come back to you on second reading.
Okay, so do we have any information? Because I remember this clearly. Do we have any information with regard to how many people applied for this? What they said about it? What the process looked like? Any information on it at all?
Well, what we have is eight existing licenses and two pending applications. Yes, ma'am. And there really hasn't been much comment. There have been no complaints about any activities related to it. And no repeat of the prior discussion that you might have heard in regard to competition and small business and territory and all those things. It's, it's really existed without much change in circumstance, truthfully.
Okay, I, I will give you a, a personal statement about this, please. So I recall being downstairs in the permitting office. A gentleman came in and he was chuckling and he was saying thank you to Daytona Beach. And I asked him, why are you so happy? I'm pleased, he didn't know who I was. I said, I'm pleased that Daytona Beach, you know, has done something, what's happened? And he said, well, you're only charging $100 for your food permit. And he said, in Holly Hill, they're charging $1,300. And you have to go for a permit application and the owner of the building has to go ahead and do it also for you. And that's why he was very happy about the whole thing. So I'm, for me personally, I, even though not many people have applied, I still think that our fee should be higher for that because other cities are charging more.
So in respect to that.
Please.
We can, if you decide to go ahead and move forward with this part of the action tonight, the fees can be reviewed and recommendations can come back to you in respect to what the appropriate fee is. The renewal tonight won't somehow fix the fee. That is adjustable.
So on the fee front, I thought we were only legally allowed to charge
Administration.
a fee that was equal to our cost for, the administrative costs that we incur for processing the
Right.
the request.
And is that just a city rule for us then? That we just charge, that's across the board?
Your fee has to be somehow rationally related to your cost of administering the program.
Then I would like us to possibly investigate, as we move forward, the cost, just what other cities are charging for this.
So I would suggest respectfully to you that as this moves forward, there probably isn't time to give the inspection that you want to have occur. But certainly I can direct P and L to undertake that or have the managers direct them to do that.
But isn't the, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, Mr. Morris.
I also suspect that the, I suspect that now that, I do know that the restaurateurs do watch our, our web televised city commission meetings. I suspect I will most likely be getting some phone calls this week now that they know that it's back on, it's back in play. So I just want to make you aware of that. So I'm sure I'll be fielding some calls and I'll be happy to get back with you on what they're saying again.
And it is first reading, so there's certainly time to decide which way you're going to go.
Okay, Commissioner Delgado, go ahead.
Yeah, if I understand correctly, this is what the City Attorney was saying, that our, our fee has to be a fair representation of what it costs. It's not a chance to make money. So if Holly Hill really is charging $1,300, it just means that they, that it takes them $1,300 to what we do for $100. It's not that we're giving up a $1,200 revenue opportunity. Is that a fair summary? Mister Jagger?
Oh, yeah, that'd be an accurate way of stating it. We don't know what Holly Hill's costs are in implementing their program, what inspection procedures they may have. Also, the numbers may vary. The more licenses you issue, the less per license you would imagine would be charged.
The more licenses, the more licenses you issue, the less you would charge? We've had two licenses.
Because you, you spread that out over, again, I don't know Holly Hill's situation or, you know, what their costs are. But in general, the more licenses you issue, the less per license.
And so we've had how many?
As I understand, there are eight active licenses and there are two pending applications. And I think that's what caught the attention of the P and L staff regarding the sunset provision.
Okay, so that's.
Okay.
Yeah, my idea is that we would want to have as few barriers as possible to people opening businesses in our city. So, I mean, I'm, I'm glad that it's relatively low and I'm, I would be happy to have the most efficient process in Volusia County so that anyone who wants to open a business would think to come to Daytona first. I would have the opposite reaction. If I was in Holly Hill and I heard that it costs $1,300 to obtain one step of getting a business off the ground, I would be mortified. I mean, I, I, I don't, I, I don't think we should do anything to make it more difficult from, you know, a fee standing. If we have some issue with the quality of the applicant or we want to make sure that the finished product is up to snuff as we've talked about before, we can do that. But I don't think that, you know, we, we should have a financial barrier to entry that's that high. $1,300 seems incredibly high as a fee to pay the city for any kind of initial business license. I mean, that, that seems very, very high.
I agree.
And I, I know that, I know that it can't be because it, and I know that it can't be an opportunity. It's not a way for us to make money.
Sure.
It's got to be a way to offset the cost. So I'm, I'm glad that we don't have those kind of costs associated with giving people an opportunity to open a business in our, in our community. And I mean, the other thing is that certainly food trucks did not, would have done almost no business for the last, what, three or four months with the whole COVID-19 thing? So I mean, I, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm shocked to hear that there were pending applications. That's, I mean, to me, that's, that's intriguing because someone's still trying to go out there and open a business that I think would is probably very hard hit by COVID-19. I mean, restaurants were completely shut down for quite some time. So, you know, I, I would be in favor of extending the process for a little bit longer because I don't think that if we thought looking at things for one year would be a good litmus test, we had kind of a crazy year to do that. So that's just my thought.
So the beauty of discourse is that we can share opinions openly at commission. My opinion is, in fact, the opposite. It is that in the age of the COVID-19 and restaurants being closed, it is going to pose a problem and that there, it's hard for a restaurant now with more people in the marketplace, it makes it even harder. And they have brick and mortar. They cannot just pick up and go and be that agile. They are where they are. And so my concern is for the small business person who is now in this position where they have limited capacity, 50%, and we don't know when that's going to change for them. So that's my position. I'm sure I'll be getting phone calls about this in the next few days.
You know, when we passed this last year, I, you know, I was the one that was asking for the sunset provision just in case we got into it and learned something that we hadn't contemplated going in. And, you know, my, the two things I was worried about was were we, were we getting a bunch of operators that were going to misbehave and not abide by the rules and do, you know, you know, cause trouble, you know, park in front of existing restaurants and whatnot. You know, and then the other was, were we going to have, you know, a flood of trucks coming into the city? And, you know, frankly, I don't have any problem with this item before us tonight to remove the sunset because I don't think it has been, I think it's been a well-managed and very thoughtful plan that we put into place. And, you know, I, as a, as a foothold business maybe for people to get started, I, I think a food truck is an interesting, you know, concept. But I will, Commissioner Delgado, take a little different viewpoint on the, the business part of it because I, I do think it does reduce the likelihood of somebody investing in a brick and mortar restaurant, which, which will cost 10 times more than, you know, buying a food truck. So, you know, but, you know, people got to start somewhere. You know, there's been a lot of places that have started with a food truck and then, you know, found a great neighborhood and, you know, rented a place or bought a place and moved in. So, you know, hopefully this will be maybe perhaps catalyst for, for some new brick and mortar businesses that we might see here down the road.
And I mean, we've seen a lot of new brick and mortar businesses open up in the community. I mean, we have Fort Rivers and a lot of other businesses that have opened up recently. I mean, restaurants are just difficult businesses to run. I don't remember the statistics, but I thought in business school it was like some disproportionate number of restaurants go out of business within a very short period of time. So I know they're very difficult businesses, like trying to catch lightning in a bottle. And I just, it's just one of those things that we have to agree to disagree sometimes that I don't think it's the same competition. I don't think that a brick and mortar restaurant is really directly competing with a food truck. I think it's different markets and all that. I mean, in some circumstances, it could be. But we haven't really, I haven't heard any complaints from any of the restaurateurs in my district about, you know, an adverse impact from food trucks. So I don't know if anyone has heard that. And if people out there that are listening to this have been adversely affected. I think Dino and his family had spoken against the food trucks when we did this a year ago. So, you know, I haven't heard from them about it. But I'd be happy to hear if it has had an actual measurable negative effect on any established restaurant. But I haven't heard it. Have you heard anything, Mister Gilliland, Mister May? Has anyone gone back to you?
No, and that's because they've been, it's, I feel as though it's because we've been so cautious with it. I think that's the reason why. So I don't think that, that past performance, you know, is an indicator of what's to come. I'm not sure I'm seeing it that way right now. What I want to know though, I do want to hear from them and I do want to hear what they have to think about it, like they did before. And last time, they came out in force. You know, which is why we're so cautious with everything. So I'm, I'm curious to see what they do now.
And I haven't heard any complaints, but, you know, it is year one. You know, we could see the explosion in participation next year. But, you know, my, my biggest concern has always been protecting the, the taxpaying businesses in Daytona Beach. And we didn't see that this year, which is why I'm willing to remove the sunset. But we still need to keep an eye on it. And, you know, it will be interesting to see if, you know, anybody who sees this tonight, you know, does contact us and, and, you know, give us some, some evidence of, of ways that they've been damaged by, by food trucks. But we were very restrictive on where we would be allowed. And I think, I think that, I think, I think we had the right model, you know. And that's what I'm hopeful, that what we put together, you know, because we were all over the boards, every, all seven of us had a different idea on where we thought this thing would end up, or should end up. And we, you know, we, we talked it through over probably five different meetings and we came up with the best compromise we could. And, you know, we, here we are a year in, we haven't had any, any complaints, so.
But I think, I mean, good for the workshop we had then, because we had a workshop on it too, so that was good.
Yes.
I, I think the other thing is that going forward, no one knows what kind of, I mean, no one knows what the economic future is for a lot of businesses. I think I saw today the AMC movie franchise. It doesn't know that it can stay operational. I mean, we've seen all kinds of large retail stores that are going bankrupt. So I mean, it's just going to be an unprecedented economic time. So, you know, I, I think we're going to have to kind of, I think we'd have to agree that the last couple of months of this year have been extraordinary and unprecedented months. months and that it's really hard to look at anything that happened, kind of, I think for the rest of this year and probably into 2021 as being, uh, a good basis for evaluating a policy. I think this is just gonna be such an unusual time. Um, you know, so I, I'm, you know, I guess we'll see what people have to say about it, but this is just such a difficult time for us to really get good information about whether a policy did or didn't work because there's been so many other things for us to be concerned about.
Yeah, Commissioner Gilliland is just, I mean, I mean, Commissioner Delgado, I, I concur with what you're saying. Uh, as we look at, uh, things, they're just new economies. Uh, things are gonna be different and, uh, food trucks very well, there's a possibility that, uh, there may be a larger role for them in society. Uh, we just don't know, uh, as things move forward. Um, and so, I'm, uh, I'm thinking this current discussion that we're having, I'm more, uh, on the line of definitely not thinking that we should place undue or unfair burdens on anyone who wants to be a business. Uh, even though we understand that people who have brick and mortar, uh, have different costs, but, you know, food trucks cost a lot of money. And so, it's a difference in opening a business from scratch where you have to construct the facility. Uh, when you buy a food truck, a lot of times they can, uh, you know, run, run the gamut of being pretty close to what it costs to open a, a, a restaurant or, you know, it's a standalone that's already constructed. So, um, yeah, I just wanna keep an open mind to it and, uh, I think this has been a good discussion over tonight. Anybody else have any other, uh, comment? No other comments? Okay.
And I, there was a motion by Commissioner Gilliland. I'm not sure who the second was.
There wasn't one.
There was. Okay.
All right.
So, we need a second.
Second.
Nope. Ruth raised her hand.
Commissioner Trager is the second. So, we have a...
Okay. Motion and a second?
Yeah, Gilliland and Trager.
Okay, Gilliland and Trager. Okay, uh, well, we'll take a vote. Uh, well, all those in favor, well, we'll just take a roll call because I'm not sure where people stand.
Okay.
Um, we'll start with Commissioner Henry.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Trager?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
No.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Yes.
Commissioner Delgado?
I'm sorry, can I take the, the vote rephrase? I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm understanding it.
This is to prove an ordinance on first reading, amending the city code, section 103 dash 2, to revise the...
To remove the, I'm sorry to interrupt, to remove the sunset?
Yes, was part of it.
Okay.
Which provided yet the repeal of the, automatic repeal of the city code, chapter 103, effective June 19th, 2020.
I'm in favor, yes.
Okay. And Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Okay, so...
The motion, I think it was 5-1?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the public hearing is set for June 17th.
Okay, public hearing, June 17th, that's our final item, correct?
Yes.
All right, well, at this time, we'll move to, uh, commission comments from, uh, start with Commissioner Henry.
Good evening. A couple of things tonight that I want to, um, housekeeping things. So, as we move, uh, forward with getting ready for our, looking for a new ci- city manager and a headhunter, I wanted to throw the idea of having, um, I know that I, I spoke in my meeting to Jim today and he talked about the several different ways that we could do it. I wanted us to see when we were going to narrow down, um, our ideas as far as how we were going to, um, go about having the plans to, to start getting ready for our new city manager with the headhunter. Uh, definitely would like to throw out the idea and see what other commissioners think about a focus group from people in the community. Uh, I think this is probably a really big decision that we've got two big decisions that we're gonna be making coming up soon, which is a city manager and then we're gonna have a, a new chief coming in, um, soon. So, I was wondering what other people on the commission thought about focus groups. I've gotten some people to call me about focus groups, uh, where people in the community that can come together and, and they can give their ideas of what they'd like to see in the new city manager that's gonna run their, their city. And I think that that, in a way, helps us with transparency and it also gives the community a voice in what they'd like to see. So, I'm interested in, uh, what anyone else would like to think on that and we can come back to that. Um, also, I'm just wondering, I didn't get a chance to ask you today, what's going on with the stadium?
The municipal stadium?
Yes.
The city's, uh, putting it back in shape so we can be ready for this next season.
Okay. Um, also, I know that we have, there's been a lot of talk about Avalon Park and I'm gonna, I, I've visited Avalon Park quite a few times and I'm not completely sold on the idea of Avalon Park here for Daytona Beach. So, I'm gonna be curious to see how, what their ideas are. The, the difference that I see in Avalon Park in Orlando or over by Orlando area is that it is very self-contained. And I'm looking at, as I drove by to look at where their ideas of, of the Avalon Park, it's not really self-contained. So, it has the potential to really crunch in all of those people that are right there on Strickland Range Road and right there at LPGA going towards Jimmy Inn. That whole community will be, can be bunched in by this brand-new community that's coming in. So, I'm really curious to see, uh, how does that, how that's going to play out as well. Um, commenting on the civil unrest and, and, and right now that we're facing, um, in the United States, all over the country and Daytona Beach, as far as, uh, we've had some very nice peaceful, and in the county, nice peaceful protests. Uh, we're having, um, I know that the NAACP is having one on tomorrow at 5:30 and they plan for it to be very well-attended, but they also plan for it to be peaceful. And, um, I do believe that everyone deserves the right to peacefully, um, protest i- if they feel that there are issues that they wanna see changed in their communities and in their, and in their country in general. Um, prayers are going out for, for George Floyd's family, uh, that just, it, it just was a hard thing to watch and a heartbreaking thing to watch. Uh, also, over in the Derbyshire area, they've been working hard at Derbyshire Park. And I know I bring up Derbyshire Park, but it is the most-used park in the county and it services, uh, normally during normal times, about 300 children a day. So, the park is coming along really nicely. They've got new, new bleachers over there. They're remodeling the bathrooms over there. The, the new field looks really good. So, um, I, I'm really happy to see that for people in all of the communities because everyone has been coming lately. I've, I've been a lot of people from Ormond over at that park. So, um, a lot of people in, in, in the county have been using that park. And I just want to go back really quickly on whether or not, what you all's ideas are for a focus group for when we get ready for the city manager.
Can I ask one question though? It, it sounds like what you're thinking is as we're developing the, the, uh, job description, to have a focus group, to have people tell us what they think is important to be, uh, required and preferred, perhaps, in the job descrip- is that what you're, what you're talking about?
Kinda just giving people and I, a, a voice.
It just...
I really just wanna give people in the community in Daytona Beach a voice. Uh, you know, you have a hundred people coming in all the time and they're complaining all the city manager does. What would you like to see? It doesn't mean that we're gonna do exactly what they say do or how they say do it, but it does mean that they get a voice in what they'd like to see, um, moving forward for their community and, and a city manager, uh, their city manager's type of ideas, uh, whether that's progressive, a little more, you know, a little least restrictive, a little more conservative, uh, just giving people a voice in the community.
I, I, I think giving people input is a great idea, you know, and I'm wondering maybe, uh, maybe we could do, do a survey where we could get more than, more than just we, what we collect in the, uh, in a focus group and get people to tell us what it is that's important to them. Give us the, you know, give them a list of some, some things that they might think about and have them rank them, you know, and which...
That's a great idea, having, giving them a list and having them rank them. I really like that idea.
So, when, my, my viewpoint is when, when I'm given a list of something, it's a list of not my ideas, it's a list of someone else's ideas that I get to choose from. So, I'm not sure where my choice actually factors in.
You could add it whenever you want, you know, I mean, just...
Sure. I do like the idea of having citizen support, um, or input. My question is, can we do it by zone? Because each zone is so different. Or is it just people from the entire city? Because I would also like that data back. I also wanna hear a little bit more from different areas and then we could share it between the zones. Is that possible?
I, I think pretty much anything is, as I talked to Jim today, anything that we decide is possible. We just gotta finally get together and see what we would like to do going forward as, as far as having something like that.
Just, yeah, uh, there's a lot of ways you can do it and focus groups is a, is a good way. And, and you're right, the zones are different. You know, the, uh, the demographics are different and, you know, the ideas are gonna be different wherever you go. So, uh, if you're gonna do something like that, I would suggest you go to specific meetings within each zone. But I wouldn't slow the process down because that, that gets you to, you know, what you're looking for as far as, and the person that's selected, but we still gotta recruit, we gotta do all those things.
You know...
So, kind of a status of where we're at, uh, we worked on it, the staff's worked on a draft and, and they're putting together, should go out next week and I'll get a copy to you next week of the RFP for the consultant selection. And then, uh, and then any comments you give back on, on that, uh, would be welcome. And I could still move forward with getting that out for you.
It's funny, um, when you were saying your idea, which you had, you had the people, it's kind of you giving the idea.
Yeah, if you're saying, hey, is it roads, is it business, is it that versus...
My idea that they can...
Right.
...so perhaps you would, as you say, go...
I'm sorry, I don't know if they're hearing you.
Yes. You would ask them what is important to them. It's like being told to choose, yeah. It's like choosing A or B, but all I get is A or B and my deal is really D. You know, that really has nothing to do with me. I do, again, I support the idea. What I would like to know is in the age of technology, why could we not have some sort of forum, if that ever comes about, if we can do that again, tape it and then have the person watch the disc? That way, they're actually seeing the people, they're hearing the people, they can see their constituents at the same time, the people that will be actually serving.
But I think we're talking about two different things.
Really?
Yeah, because what I'm...
One is data collection, correct?
What I'm hearing is get, you know, as we write the job description, so we're not gonna talk about roads or...
No, I agree.
Yeah, we're not, we're gonna talk about, you know, you, you know transparency's gonna come up as being something that is gonna be very high on a lot of people's list. So, but it will be the things that we put into the job description that the consultant will put out there for folks to, to, you know, apply against. Um, you know, when, when we get into that next phase of, of having, uh, uh, you know, interviews, I think that's when you're getting into the questions about, you know, give us some ideas you have about, you know, creative thinking on, on how we can address this issue that we're, we're 40% funded for road resurfacing, you know, out of gas taxes. How do you, what do you think we can do, you know?
And so, where does your part of the process come in? Which part, early or later?
I think you're doing both.
I had...
It's a great idea.
You both. I hadn't really thought of whether we would do it earlier, whether we would do it later. I just wanted the citizens to have a voice.
100%.
Um, and, and, and I, I like actually drawn to both, both ideas, so...
I mean, I, I think it's important that the city manager understands who the people are who live here. And so, hearing directly from them, I think, is important. I want them to, I want the person to actually, if they cannot meet them, have a good sense of who we are in terms of culturally or racially or how we live or where we live, things like that. I think that will be important for me as a commissioner anyway, how we can work that in. Again, um, I don't know yet, but I do like the idea. Uh, I want the city manager to know us.
Delgado, do you have anything? Go ahead.
All right. Yeah, I wanted to, I mean, one of the things that, I, I think it's wonderful to involve the citizens, but I think we need to make it a meaningful way. I mean, when you're asked people to like, you know, um, and you have these ideals or these values, very few people are gonna say, well, I'm closed-minded, not transparent, lazy, and just wanna go with the status quo. I mean, even if you are those things, most people are not objective enough to say like, well, I have poor people skills and I'm really passive-aggressive and I'm dilatory. So, I mean, I think in some extent, I mean, I think where it would be really helpful is once we get a list of candidates, to then have the citizens really involved in vetting those people. Because any which way you look at it, I mean, we're all gonna have, I mean, we all have, I mean, a similar aspirations. We want the best person for the job. I think it's har- I think it's better if we start like looking, once we get the people, then we start having the citizens involved in kind of assessing the actual candidate because otherwise, we're gonna come up with a very idealistic list and our, our, you know, our consultants are gonna be looking for these, these, you know, uh, ideal people and no one's gonna be, I think, willing to say that they're less than ideal. So, I mean, I, I definitely saw citizens being involved with the process, but I thought it would be once we had a list of applicants, um, maybe getting, you know, a couple of citizens from each zone involved in a, in a meeting or in an evaluation and get them to score out the various people. So, we had some real hard, objective things because, I mean, we don't want it to all be, you know, uh, fluffy at night. I mean, we really have to make a very difficult decision, probably from some very qualified candidates. So, I mean, I, to me, I thought where the best place to bring in citizens was once we had some actual candidates and have them, you know, meet the actual people. And maybe that's, uh, you know, maybe we, maybe we do need some more guidance earlier on it, but I just, I'm just not sure that anyone is going to, uh, you know, disqualify themselves because they don't meet our idealist or, you know, our, um, our aspirational goals. I mean, when I pick a jury, if I say, well, I don't want any bigots on this jury and I don't want anyone who's sexist and if you hate African-Americans, you know, please tell me, no one's willing to, oh, yeah, that's me, I'm a bigot. Um, or, you know, I really have, you know, uh, 1920s, bigoted views, don't put me on this jury. No one's gonna disclose that and even the people that might have those beliefs, sometimes they don't see the inappropriateness of their own beliefs in being on the jury. So, I think it would just be better if instead of asking people to rank, um, ideas or concepts that are very hard to, like, what do you put? Do you put, um, being transparent above being, uh, available? Do you put, you know, how do we define these terms? I think that's very nebulous. So, I just think the citizens would probably be better served by being involved once we had a handful of candidates. My idea was maybe each commissioner put up a group of people from their zone, maybe two to five people from their zone to serve in like a welcoming committee or a greeting committee and let those people actually hash it out with, you know, real human beings. So, that's how I would kind of, um, get citizen involvement in the actual process. And then, you know, we could have that distilled down into four cars or something like that for the final selection. Does that, does that make any sense?
It, it makes sense to me and while I, I think both of those things probably would, uh, would suffice because you could have, uh, 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 the two to five people that you're talking about, five is a, is a bit much, but maybe the two, two to four people, two to three people. But also, I, I don't think two to four people times seven of us, which is 28 people, is enough people to really get a gauge of what the, what people in this city really wants. I, I think that we're gonna have to broaden it and we're gonna have to make it much wider and we're gonna give, we, we need to give many more people ideas and view, a, a chance to express ideas and views. How that's done, I don't know. That's why I'm bringing it to you, so that we could work that out. But then I, I think also that you still could have the, the two to four people in some way.
Uh, for me, it's important that, um, that the city manager, again, I'm gonna say it again, actually knows the demographics of the people living here. I mean, all the different zones. So, I can almost envision people, and this is doing it en masse, people from, let's say, Zone 3, they each have an opportunity to upload a two-to-three-minute little video about what theirs, what their area is like, what they're looking for, what they think of the city. And the city manager, the potential one, can actually see the people, know who they are, listen to what each person has to say. Because the representation of two to five, I agree with you, in each area does not in fact represent Zone 3. It would be, we have too many different things going on even in your zone.
And I know Jim gave me some good ideas today...
But it's not an election, right? I mean, that's the thing.
Jim gave me some good ideas today and I'd like for him to tell, tell us some of the ideas that you said that, because you came up with various ideas of how we could do this.
You know, the focus idea, you might just, let me just kinda give you a thought about that. Uh, I think that's, that's gonna help you more than anything else. If you meet with, uh, the groups in your community and get a good idea, you know, what, you know, talk to them about what they, let them tell you what they think they would like to see in somebody. Uh, I don't know that you necessarily have to get everybody in a, in the same group and I don't think that's necessarily the end. It's kind of the beginning. You, you're getting input and then, then you can really control that, uh, as you go forward. Uh, but in the process, once you get, um, once you've hired the, uh, the consultant, he's gonna assist you with actual working on job descriptions. he's going to assist you with actual working on job descriptions, then you can take the input that you're getting now about that position, and relay that information to him. What you, what you have, you know, decided is something important to you as a result of all these meetings and contacts you have. Uh, and then after that, uh, he's going to, he's going to send out an advertisement re, uh, to, uh, encourage and invite applicants, and in doing that, you get a wide range of applicants from all over the country. Uh, those applicants then, um, will be prepared to come here, and what he generally does, or he or she, whoever the consultant is, they will, uh, they will sift through all of those, and based on the information you have provided, he'll kind of come down to, like, 10 or 15 for, uh, for you to look at. And what has happened in some of the jobs I've applied for, is they have a committee of people that go through and look at those along with you, and, uh, and say, okay, these, we think more of this one than others, and then they kind of help you get to that point. But, uh, they don't really eliminate anybody, that feedback comes back to you, and then the consultant will probably say, well, these are the five that I think is best fits, uh, the, the need that you have identified for us here. And, uh, and then you, at that point, you can go all the way back to the total package of 15, and pull somebody out, or you can take, uh, that recommendation from him, and you can have five to, uh, you know, five is normally the number that's used, you know, four or five people you actually pay to bring in and, and interview. Uh, and then when you get into that process, the process itself is, is a series of things, it's not just an interview. It's, um, in my case, and almost all the jobs recently, you have community meetings. You have a meeting in, uh, at Midtown with, uh, with all the applicants, and they get to come, they bring their families or whoever, and they, um, you know, they, they, they get to know the people and the crowd. And then you have another one in another part of the community. You select where it's going to be. You have two or three meetings like that, and then you come back together, because you're going to get a load of input from the public as a result of that, and you're going to have a lot of participation from a lot of people that you don't see normally, uh, just because they're interested in the kind of management that's going to come into your city, and they want to be a part of that, too. So, I think you'll, you'll have a chance, in the beginning, to get, uh, the people you normally see are going to give you input, then as you get into the process, you're going to get a lot, a lot of information from different people about, about what they see in some of these folks. So, that's, uh, kind of the process, and once it's eliminated, then you get into the formal individual interviews with the applicants, and, uh, make a selection as a group. That's kind of how it normally works. I hope that helps you.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to tell you how to do it, I'm just, just giving you an idea of what, uh, what I've experienced over the time.
That's all my comments.
Well, I know I'm probably preaching to the choir, but I just want everyone to remember, this is now the 2020 census, to get your census form in, and if you have some neighbors that you know have not done it, urge them to, because this means financial money for the city and, uh, state and everything, because it depends on population. That's all.
All right. Do you have anything?
Thank you. First, I want to talk about the, the city manager concept. I mean, I think one thing that I'm hearing, that it took me, I had to kind of have a cognitive shift, is the city commission are elected people, and we are supposed to, um, kind of know the will, or represent the people of our, of our district. Um, the city manager is a manager, it's a totally different thing. So, the attributes that you might look for in someone who is a representative of the people is different than, I think, what you wanted, someone who's going to be a manager, um, and who's going to be responsible for, you know, administering a huge budget, and doing all these different things, kind of like board directors versus a CEO. So, to me, um, you know, I don't know, I don't know if I feel that it, that it, uh, you know, necessarily as, as much of a democratic process as it is going to be an obligation on the commissioners to really kind of be the voice of their zone, and they kind of know their zone, and then help kind of guide the choice. I mean, obviously, at the end of the day, I definitely want community input and all of that, but I'm not sure that this is, uh, going to, should be a, you know, like, a referendum, or, you know, just an election on the city manager. So, I think there has to be some kind of, at the end of the day, we're not going to be able to pass the responsibility off to the citizenry entirely, to make the difficult choice of who's going to be the manager going forward, and I'm just not, I, I, I don't want to lose sight of, of this. I mean, it's great to have citizen input, and I, I think we should absolutely do it, but there's, um, there is a difference in my mind between a manager and an elected representative, because, I mean, we're subject to being, you know, re-elected or not every four years. The manager could stay on for a lot longer, and actually needs to have some degree of, um, protection from politics. I mean, if you want to talk about things like that, you could talk about, you know, do the citizens want, uh, long-term contracts, short-term contracts, automatically renewing contracts? Uh, you know, obviously, those are going to be issues that may make it difficult for us to attract the city manager. Someone relocating may want to have certain assurances, certain protections against, you know, the whims of the politics involved. But I think those are things that are also things we should be asking for the, uh, from the community. I think those are the difficult decisions we're going to have to make. So, to me, I'm going to have to do a lot, keep my focus on that this is not an election as much as it is a choice of a manager, and to me, those are, those are different things. Um, the other thing I wanted to comment on is, obviously, the, the last week has been a terrifying and sobering week for all of us. Um, you know, the murder of George Floyd is horrific to watch. Uh, you know, I've been a criminal defense attorney for 15 years, I've heard all kinds of stories from people, I've seen autopsies, I've seen all kinds of horrible things, and watching, um, that man die, uh, it, on camera was just, and I couldn't believe it. Um, it was up there with, you know, the Al Qaeda videos and things like that, just shocking things that I can't, I can't believe I actually saw that on TV. So, I'm, I'm terrified for what that says about the state of things, and I'm glad to see throughout the country that people have been able to protest peacefully. I was really, um, my heart was really touched by pictures of law enforcement officers hugging protesters, taking part of the protest. Um, I mean, one of the things that I think makes our country so great is our right to peacefully assemble, to protest, and all those things, and I've lived in countries where that was not allowed. I've lived in countries that are under martial law, so I know the difference, uh, and I appreciate and love the difference that we have here. That being said, I'm a little concerned about things I've heard from people in the community. There's a, there's a fear that, uh, something bad is going to happen in Daytona. Um, there's been flyers and things circulated on Facebook, I, I think probably all of you have seen it, concerns that there's going to be an agitating presence here this weekend, that there's going to be some violence, or something like that. I know law enforcement is aware of that, but, you know, to me, that's really a frightening thing. I think we, as a city, have, uh, have done a good job in sharing our values, and in, you know, trying to reach out to our citizens, and I hope that all efforts are being made to protect the people who are protesting and their right to protest, to protect the citizens, and to make sure that there is no, uh, violence or anything like that. I mean, I know that we, no one condones violence in this commission, no one thinks acceptable, no one, you know, would turn a blind eye to it. I know we're, I think, probably all in one mind when it comes to that. But I've received a lot of calls and a lot of communication with people who are really scared about the potential for violence. So, I, I know that we're taking that seriously, I'm sure the police are on that, but I think we just need to reassure our community that we are aware of these kinds of things, we, our law enforcement is very proactive, and that they're not going to defy and let this kind of thing happen. They're going to protect the citizens, but they're also going to protect the rights of the protesters to assemble peacefully. That, to me, is, I think, a value that we would all share, and I'm sure that's a value shared by our law enforcement community, and hopefully, there'll be no, um, nothing newsworthy this weekend except a peaceful protest. But, um, that's all I wanted to say. Uh, thank you all, have a great weekend, and I hope that everything this weekend is safe and respectful.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner May?
Um, so, I have a couple of questions. Um, we recognize that the city manager is leaving, but, you know, in general, with the staff, I'm just curious, the staff in, on the, um, in the management team, do we have a succession plan at all, plan for anybody who's leaving, that we're not, that they don't just leave, and then how are they replaced? Do we do it internally, externally? How does that go?
Uh, internally, we have selection of, any staff person that would leave, we would fill a position internally.
And so then, if there's succession of ideas, so for example, if we're working on a project, let's say MMV, we're working on a project and somebody leaves, hypothetical, that project continues on. The project stays, the people revolve out, but the concept remains, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, I think that's important, that we have a vision for something, the vision maintains irrespective of the person leaving, right? Number one. Also, Chief Driscoll, do you have any more health updates for us? Anything at all? And you can say you don't.
I do, I'll be very brief.
Please.
Um, yes, uh, in the manager's update memo that was published today, at the Midtown Testing Center, we tested 1,375 residents, primarily from the Midtown area, and only eight people thankfully tested positive. That's 0.5% positivity rate, which is incredible. Uh, within Volusia County, we're currently residing about a 3.3% positivity rate, and I think statewide, we're under 5%.
I have a question. So, let's say that I am a, a private citizen, and I, you know, what are my resources if I test positive? What am I, where do I go? What do I do?
So, once you're notified that you are positive, the Florida Department of Health, the local office in Volusia County here, will make contact with you.
Okay.
Um, they will give you all the educational information, supplemental testing for you and your family, they will initiate their contact tracing to get ahold of all your people that you've made contact with.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's pretty extensive policy with their epidemiologists, um, but they'll make sure that you are contained and you isolate for 14 days, and any missing contacts, they make efforts to try to find those people.
Sure.
Um, in, in addition to the current testing, uh, we met with the Health Department and the Housing Authority today, this afternoon, out front of the Windsor Mailie, um, and we're bringing a exclusive event there, and, um, possibly another event, um, elsewhere in a similar community that I don't want to mention right now. Um, but that would make five testing sites that have occurred in Daytona Beach far greater than any other city in Volusia County, thanks to our partnerships.
So, I appreciate the fact that that is, you know, Windsor Mailie, it's in Zone Three, and we have about 300 seniors here. To that, I'm going to just throw in my request, as I always do, there are two more apartment buildings, they're not with Housing Authority, but within three blocks of Housing Authority. I'm just putting it out there, one house is about 150, and another one house is about 150. They're very close, all seniors, just so you know.
And we are trying to gauge that, because we're trying to avoid bringing, uh, they're a community within a community, and we hate to bring spread to some of our most vulnerable population.
Sure. But there are some other buildings there that are not with housing, but also just putting it on your radar.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Um, and then I'd like to know, please, last time we spoke about MMV, I'd like to know when our meeting is scheduled and/or planned? What are our plans for that?
I'll have to get back with you, I do not have a date and time for that right now.
Okay. And then I would like to know also, please, a proposed date, last time the contract was ending in 29 days on MLK, when do we suspect the work will be done on MLK?
Um, Dave, Dave, what's, when's the, when, when do you expect the contract to be done with MLK?
Contract is expected to be. Actually, is obligated to be completed in July, but we expect the road to be paved in the next about week and a half, be substantially complete. There likely will be a delay on the final due to the removal of the poles that are owned by 18T and FPNL, but they are engaged, the utility providers are, and we are getting close to that removal.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you so much. All right, and then just a quick update, Downtown Beach Street is going fantastically well. Are we ahead of, ahead of schedule, on schedule? What is going on with that?
We are pretty much a little ahead right now. We've got, uh, probably in the next two or three days, they'll make the turn and start back to south, and, uh, that should do much quicker, really, than this first project.
Okay. And for those of you at home, we also have an update, um, people can find this, right? Because we have an update on Oak Ridge Boulevard, not in my notes, I wanted an update on Oak Ridge Boulevard, but we actually have that, and it's online. You can find everything that's in the managers that I'm reading right now, actually, online.
And some of this is going to be mailed to them, the internal inserts.
Okay.
It will be in the mail, like, this, this particular sheet here, which has got a lot of information on it.
Yeah.
Uh, but it is available online, all.
Right. Okay. And then, um, I'm just going to, um, piggyback on Commissioner Henry's comments about the peaceful protest taking place, that is being supported by the, um, MLK group out of Florida, BCU School of Religion is going to be involved, NAACP is involved, and Daytona Beach Police is involved. They're part of the organization team. So, thank you so much, and I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you, sir.
And the Black Clergy Alliance.
Say that again, love?
And the Black Clergy Alliance.
And the Black Clergy Alliance, yes.
All right, Ms.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a couple of things, let me, um, so the county announced after their meeting, I think, last week, that they were going to have funds available for cities related to, you know, from the CARES, uh, dollars that they receive. And, uh, it's my understanding, they have not designed how that's going to work yet. I know they've rolled out recently the not-for-profits, and, you know, they have their, their rental mortgage program as well. Chief, it looks like you're getting ready to say something?
No, this sounds like you're right on target.
Okay, so we're waiting on, on instruction from them?
Yes, they provided us the initial guidance, the same guidance that they utilized internally within the county, following the Treasury Department guidance. Um, the money allocation of $15 million for the municipal distribution is set aside. Uh, they're still working on the details of how would we report our COVID-related expenses, and how the reimbursement process and auditing process would take place.
Okay. Um, and Jim, just, I meant to mention this to you earlier, but, uh, I actually was down at the golf course on Saturday, and, uh, Jack Quay told me that, actually, their electric bill is, like, 70% higher than last year because of the requirement, one person per golf cart.
Mm.
So, you've got four, four carts in a group, and to me, that's a COVID, you know, eligible expense for reimbursement.
You're right.
You know, so we need to do everything we can to find even little kind of obscure things like that, to make sure that if they come up with a plan and say they're going to split that $15 million bucks, uh, based on population, and, you know, our share of that might be $3 million, we need to make sure we have $3 million worth of, or the receipts we can give them to make sure that we get, we get reimbursed for those, uh, for those expenses. So, um, I would just, you know, it didn't occur to me until I had the conversation, but, um, you know, it is something that I think would be, you know, would behoove us to start now, you know, coming up with that list, instead of waiting until they design the entire program.
Yeah, we're already, we're working on that already.
Okay. Well, did you have that on your list?
That was on the list.
Hey, good, all right.
What I didn't have.
Uh, let's see, I, I saw an article today that actually I thought was very interesting about Bank of America. They're going to offer, they're going to put up over the next four years, a billion dollars to start looking at ways to address, um, injustice, discrimination in, in the United States, and I think it's going to go to $250 million a year. But they mentioned in the article that, uh, HBCUs will actually be people they're looking to partner with.
Mm.
So, somehow we need to make sure Bethune-Cookman is, is aware of this, and is, is, once again, being proactive and, and getting out there and making sure there's an opportunity for them, you know, that they can, they can take advantage of it. Um, I will do what I can, but I want to make sure everybody else is, uh, aware of that as well. Uh, let's see, the, uh, so I was, I was very critical of, of what happened on Memorial Day weekend over on the beach side, and I don't know how your all went, your, your weeks went, but that, my week right after that, I had probably, I had over 20 complaints, and uh, everybody saw the Jen Card email, which, uh, you know, there was a follow-up email later, but, you know, her email the day after was, you know, fairly punishing about the damage that it does to his reputationally and economically. The complaints I got were about the beach, which isn't our jurisdiction, but people not social distancing the beach, uh, the boardwalk, um, what happens at Breakers Ocean Park, and the thing in front of A1A. It was, uh, it wasn't any particular race, it wasn't any particular age group, it was just, it was, it, the, the people of Daytona Beach were probably represented 75% of the complaints I got, and they were beachside, Midtown, obviously, most on the West Side. And, uh, you know, that was, you know, the, it, I, as I thought through it afterwards, you know, our, our police department does an amazing job at, at controlling events with large crowds, things like Bike Week and races. But in this case, the, the, the goal is to disperse crowds. And, you know, I sent that email Thursday night that I was, you know, disappointed I was, and, um, you know, then, uh, I don't, I think our communication could have been a little better, but I watched the county's press conference on Friday, and sure enough, the things I was complaining about on Thursday were pretty much all addressed on Friday. And particularly, uh, they've mentioned that both the NAACP and the Black Clergy Alliance And particularly, they've mentioned that both the NAACP and the Black Clergy Alliance were involved with talking with Mr. Isaac, Jeff Isaac, who had the event that was planned for this coming weekend. And that he agreed to postpone it because he recognized that it wasn't the right time to do something like that. And the chief, and the sheriff, I think, called him up to the podium, actually. And I certainly want to thank Mr. Isaac for, for understanding the environment and being willing to postpone it. Now, we did have an event planned for Memorial Day weekend, which was also supposedly canceled. And we saw what happened. So I'm sure we're prepared for the possibility of, you know, folks coming, even though the event is not being conducted. But I, as, as aggravated as I was after getting yelled at a lot all week, I really couldn't have been more pleased as, as time went by. Even on, on Saturday, we saw that the event planned for MMV had been, had been addressed. You know, folks that had been, that were known to have committed some offenses on, on Memorial Day weekend had been arrested. You know, the, it was the, my complaint about not being proactive on Memorial Day weekend was more than answered with all of the proactive things that happened the next weekend. So kudos to everybody involved with that. And Mr. Mayor, I know you had a, you had a role as well. Thank you. And, you know, I would like to say that, you know, I do have a lot of confidence in, in our PD. But, you know, I, I've been up here 14 and a half years. I've never had people as upset as they were that week after Memorial Day. And an 85-year-old neighbor of mine, who is a dear friend, literally was screaming at me in public. You know, I think it's because people just have cabin fever. They're tired of being locked up at home. But the, by and large, pretty much everybody's concern was if we continue to allow these things to happen, the governor's going to revoke our, our phase one status and put us back on lockdown. And I don't want that to happen again. And, you know, I think we could have done a better job that week after of communicating with residents that, you know, you know, it was, it was something that was taken seriously. It was something that we were working on, that we were doing, a lessons learned kind of situation. That we're looking at how to do, how to be better at, you know, at, you know, dispersing crowds.
I have a, I have a question or a statement, actually. I'm unsure, and maybe I can get some clarity on this. Nothing is being permitted as far as I'm aware of. I believe that these, this is a phenomenon. It's a, it's a Facebook pop-up event. They advertise it. There's not one person. So I'm, I'm, I want people to, I want to disabuse people of the idea that we are allowing events. We're in fact saying there are no events. People are choosing. These are things that literally, if I said to you, hey, let's all meet for a coffee. Everybody I know, let's all meet for coffee on B Street, 10 o'clock. I don't know who's going to show up. All you know is that I said I'm going to be there for coffee and that's it. And then people show up from Jacksonville, from Tampa, from Miami. And it can happen like that. And that is the power of social media. So I, I'm impressed with something that's happening right now. I'm sure all of us are getting little Facebook messages or I'm, I'm getting people who don't know I know them or people who know me, anyway, are sending me clips that they're getting from other places in other cities from people advertising for Daytona Beach. They're sending it to me as a commissioner and saying, tell your local authorities that this could potentially be happening. I'm not sure how many, how often that's going to happen. I'm not sure how to be prepared for that, except be prepared all the time or be extremely agile and responsive and quick. And I think we're doing a great job.
We, I think, Chief, you've got, what, five people that do that all the time? Social media? Just briefly tell them what do we, we are doing with social media.
Yeah, correct me, please, Chief. Yeah, we've, we've got a great plan in place. We had a plan in place that weekend. I think the plan was a sound plan tactically. We made some adjustments because coming up this weekend, we've got to face it. Every weekend, there's going to be big events here in the city of Daytona Beach. Unfortunately, you know, we're, you know, we're prepared, I mean, fortunately, we're prepared for the crowds. But this is the United States of America. We can't stop people from coming. If they want to come here, they can come here. I can't stop them.
We're going to have it. And, and I know you're prepared.
Yeah.
You and I have talked about the, you know, the plans that we've got for things that are coming, that are advertised that we
We're monitoring social media. We got everything covered.
So when you say event for people watching, is, that is not our event. It's not something that went through permit.
It's not our event.
Something we know nothing about.
It's not sanctioned by the city. It's not approved. It's not authorized. People are going to come with the beach. We've got a great beach here, a great city. People are going to come and they're welcome. I mean, you know, a lot of people are hyping stuff up on the, on the Facebook just to stir problems. But, you know, you just can't rush in on things. You've got to sit there and plan tactically and, and, and we know what we're doing. We've got a plan we've been doing this a while. I mean, we're trained for this, that's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
When we say, when we say people are terrified and people were so fearful, I think that sends the wrong message and it sends a bad message. First of all, the little 85-year-old lady, I know she wasn't even at the beach.
Of course not.
She was not at the beach. So what was she so terrified in?
Remember, my comment was people were afraid of going back into lockdown. Not afraid of any of the
Right.
No, I'm just, I'm not just
They're afraid of going back on
I've seen comments and I've seen emails that people are, and, and a certain county commissioner got up and said, people were so afraid and people were so fearful. And it sends the wrong message because it's saying to me, it's right. And it's saying that because this, this group of people were at the beach and we were so afraid. When, when I got the message from sheriff and I got the message from chief, both of them reassured me that everything went great except for a few incidents. And you're going to have incidents on a city, on a beach the size of Daytona Beach when, on the first day when you open up the, when you open the beach back up. We had no control of opening the beach back up on Memorial Day. I would have never done that, but I'm not the governor and I respect my governor for his decision, for what he decided to do. But using words like terrified and, and, and so afraid, to me, it just sends a bad message. And I don't like that. I really don't because I, I think it relates to exactly the type of person that was at the beach. And nobody, from what the chief said, there were no incidents as far as nobody was robbed, no stores were robbed, nobody was beat up. He had some incidents, but they dealt with it. So I, I think as leaders, we have to get out of using that, that kind of terminology. Most of those people weren't at the beach. And if you were that afraid, stay in your house. You know, take one for the team because I, me and a lot of my residents, we take one for the team on a lot of events that happen in the city of Daytona Beach that we're not really interested in or, or into. But we realize that we're a tourist town, we're a tourist city. And so maybe there will be events that you don't really care for. I don't really care for some events that come here. But I may okay with it because I know the type of city that I live in. And, and the city should be an inclusive city. And, and we can't stop people from coming to the city of Daytona Beach. And people can come and enjoy the beach just like everyone else can. And that's the message that I hope that, and, and chief and sheriff and all of our law enforcement have been driving that home. We're, we're an open city. Our doors are open. You can come here. We're going to adjust. We're going to put the right amount of law enforcement that we need, just like we put the right amount of law enforcement for every other event. That's what we're going to do. That's what we do. We make it happen. And at the end of the day, I'm proud of the job that they do. And the idea of bringing in the National Guard, I, I think that's an overreach. You know, you bring in the National Guard for a couple of people at the beach. I, I don't, I don't, I think sometimes it's a little tone deaf.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of people got excited. They saw some video on TV and it really made it look worse than it, than it was at that time. But the same token, we took note of who was doing what there. We were able to remedy those that were doing acts that were illegal in, in that instance. And, and they have been, you know, been arrested in some cases. But in any event, in any event, it's not about a race thing. It's about crowd control and how we handle it in events. Now, we've got a different event. You got two events that were planned here this weekend. One was a truck event and one was a pop-up event that somebody had. The truck event was actually permitted at one time, but they withdrew their permit and rescheduled. And the, the pop-up guy was the guy that we talked to the other day about his event. And he, he has canceled his event. He's going to reschedule for later. So, and we talked at length with them, with him, the pop-up event, about how, how to do an event where it's legal first. And secondly, it is profitable for him at the same time respected by everybody else. So we had a, a good opportunity to discuss that with him. And hopefully that takes root. I think he was, he's an enterprising young man that had, you know, had, had some really good ideas, maybe not focused on the outcome and focused on, on how you can make it a, an earning opportunity for him. And, and we kind of showed him that. So I think the department handled the, the police department, sheriff's department did a great job overall with that, that activity. And, and we're, we worked jointly with not only the two police, no, the police and the sheriff, but we worked jointly with the cities around us. And we're all in communications about these activities when they come to our city or theirs.
Absolutely. And we want to be open to the younger people in the community when they want to do something. We do need to work with them so that we get the things that we want, which is a safe community out of it. And they get some of the things that they want, which is a nice pleasant time had by everyone. And when we work with them and we talk with them and we show them, this is how you do this, this is how we do that. And then we don't make it so hard to they, until they get frustrated and just feel like, just forget it. I'm just going to do it the other way. If, if we don't, if we don't do that, then it's always going to be just like it was this weekend. Not that this weekend was a, was a sanctioned event. But that's what we're going to get more of, non-sanctioned events, if we don't start to work with the young people in the community when they want to do certain events.
So I I have a thought about this. I don't care who has the event. I don't care if you're a spring breaker, if you're a biker, what it, whatever it is you're doing. We still have some rules and regulations as it relates to driving, as it relates to scooters on sidewalks, as it relates to parking. We have just general guidelines that when visitors come here and guests come here and they choose Daytona Beach to spend their money, we welcome you here. But I just ask that you please respect the environment that you're entering into as relates to trash. For me, it was the parking on beach side. I mean, residents could not, there were cars parked in front of their homes. And this was not just in the evening. This was the daytime also. And so, and this was happening also on MMV. The driving on MMV that particular evening was just, it was terrible. And it was backed up for a long time. And for me, I felt for my residents who lived in those communities, as did you, I'm sure, trying to leave their neighborhoods and go and do something else. So for me, all I ask is that when you do come here, have courtesy and respect and treat our home as you would yours.
I think we all want that.
Yes.
I don't think anybody up here not wants that.
And Dana, once again, the complaints I got were not racial at all.
Yeah.
It really was the large gathering.
When you start yelling about, you're so terrified. We've had, Daytona has large gatherings
I didn't say anything about being
all of the time. Not you, per se.
Yeah.
But when the message gets out that, that residents were terrified and they were so scared. And I know I, I got that
Okay.
from some people, that people were so terrified and scared.
And that's not what I heard. That might have been what you heard from the county council person and their, those comments. But what I heard was they don't want to go back on lockdown because we're going to, you know, everybody's still, there's still so many things we don't know about coronavirus. You know, and, and I think we're starting to find that maybe it's not quite as contagious as what everybody originally feared. So, you know, it's a, you know, it, we're not out of the woods on this thing in a long, in a long shot. And I think that it probably is seasonal and come this fall, we're going to have another outbreak. You know, and, you know, we're not, our numbers in Florida aren't going down. And the governor issued his phase two, you know, first, you know, reopening order this afternoon. And he, he did leave restaurants at 50%, but he opened bars. He opened theaters, bowling alleys, arcades, you know, a lot of, a lot of things. And, you know, that'll be effective on Friday. So, you know, I'm, I'm very nervous. You know, Commissioner Delgado, Commissioner Treger, through our last few meetings, have been very eloquent in their commentary about, you know, we can't let our guard down. And, you know, I'm, I totally agree with that. And I am, I am concerned about large gatherings. And, you know, I, I think we're going to see more of those as we move forward. And, you know, it doesn't matter to me if it's, you know, if you're on the news, you know, the, that thing up at Lake of the Ozarks, you know, that pool party, that bar, you know, those were pretty much all white people. Turns out one of them had, had the coronavirus a couple of days later. So now they're trying to hunt down all the people that were there quarantined. You know, the event at Galveston, you know, that was predominantly a Caucasian crowd. It was a Jeep event. You know, they ended up with 200 arrests and I think five or seven people shot. You know, this is not something that, you know, trying to avoid these, these people that, that I really think is people have cabin, cabin fever.
Right.
And they reach a breaking point, they just say, I'm going to go out and, and do something
I don't care.
because I've been stuck inside for so long. And we're, we, we've made so much progress in containing this virus. You know, once again, the, the idea of not letting our guard down is one that I think we need to keep, you know, keep fresh in people's minds.
I, I hope that when we, even when we have a peaceful protest, that people are masked up and, you know, we social distance everything, just, but I agree with you. We've worked so hard to get our numbers in a good place and people have been so, just doing the diligent thing. For me, it's always the increase of people from other cities who are just letting off steam and coming here. And then what do they leave behind? That's, that's my concern also. I agree with you. So I say still be, still be vigilant, still be diligent with your own personal safety.
I, I agree. And my, my concern was, was not, I mean, my issue was not that because I, I'm still quarantining. I'm still in the house.
Mm-hmm.
So my issue is just sometimes we have to be as leaders careful of terminology that we use because it does invite fear for people who already are fearful. And terminology matters. And I know you didn't do it, but, you know, even a certain person that got up on the, on, during the city meeting and, and during the county meeting and, and talked about how terrified people were. And, and it just sent a really bad message to certain people in, in Daytona Beach.
You're, you're right. And it's, it's a good comment to make because we, we need to be careful because everybody's a little on edge right now and a little more sensitive, I think, to, to maybe the misuse of a, of a term. And your points well taken.
Thank you.
But my, my last comment is, is regarding the murder of Mr. Floyd. I, I've never seen anything as horrific as that. You know, I've spent a lot of time in Philadelphia and DC before I came back to Florida, you know, in the late 90s. And I, I've seen people killed in car accidents and people who've been shot. But to watch somebody intentionally murdered is like, like it, I can't even describe it. I mean, it just, it makes my blood boil, you know, that something like that could actually happen in this country. And I'm just prayful that, that, you know, something good can come out of this, that we, that this will bring an awareness to a problem that we have that, that, that has needed attention for a really long time. And we'll see things like Bank of America stepping up and pledging a billion dollars to, to try and help, you know, you know, you know, fix this problem. And, you know, but I, 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 there just aren't words to describe. I, I, you know, my heart is just broken for what's happened, this whole thing. So, but, like I said, I'm still hopeful of something positive is going to come out of this because it is shining a light on something that's needed more light upon it for a very long time. And I, I'm confident that in the end, we're going to end up in a better place than when we started. And that's my last comment. Good night.
Let's hope so.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner Gilliland, your last statement there that we are, in the end. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That in the end, that we are going to come out better than we were before. And quite frankly, my opinion is that we don't really have much choice as a nation. We have to be better. The response and the reaction to this shows us that the American people will accept nothing less than that we be better in this area. There are a lot of factors that play into what's taking place in this nation. And tomorrow's march, I'll be engaged. And while a part of me engages very reluctantly because there's a, there's a part of me that really wants people not to have to do what we're having to do. I hate seeing thousands of people linked arm in arm, marching usually peacefully in the midst of a pandemic. That bothers me that, that has to happen. And my first response to reaction has normally been to tell people not to do it. Because we have been, I've been preaching that for, you know, since three days before Bike Weekend. That's what I've been telling people. Stay home. Try not to be in places where your safety might be jeopardized because of the coronavirus. But it, the reality is that George Floyd's murder has elicited a response in conjunction with the two other situations where people of color were unjustly killed. So it, it's a challenging time for all of us. And we, we recognize that we were a, a nation on edge. We were a nation that was completely on the edge because we had experienced something that, you know, we're the freest, most liberated country in the world. Yet we experienced, you know, you know, more than two months of almost complete lockdown where we, we governed ourselves in accord with what the authorities told us to do. And we did an amazing job as a nation. I was so proud of how I was so proud of how most people responded to the things that we asked them to do during, you know, the COVID crisis. But when we turned the light switch on, things changed. And a lot of our frailties and our problems have been properly exposed. While I didn't want to have to come out even to address this even after it happened, because I too, I have never seen anything that angered me in my life more than that. Never have I seen anything that angered me more. And the range of emotions that I felt in watching that and the range of things that I've had to deal with in my own home was, has been completely frustrating. But I still wanted to stay in even after all of that. But I guess when you're, when you're the mayor, you have to, at some point, come out. And there was a part of me that at the end understood that if I don't begin to take some sort of a stand on this issue, that I would be on the wrong side of right. And that's not something that you should have to decide during a pandemic. We shouldn't have to do this. And the real issue is that, and I say we, I mean, we as a nation, because we as a nation have now chosen that this is something that we're going to confront. And because we're confronting it, and what bothers me the most is that it was caused by someone with a badge who is licensed and sanctioned to protect and serve. And the bad name that he has elicited for law enforcement, for his colleagues or his former colleagues, or the bad light that he has shed, though we all acknowledge that he is a great deviation from the norm, the reality is that he is a law enfor, he was a law enforcement officer. And what troubles me is that when those who are sworn to uphold the law become lawless. And we have rules and policies in place as a nation in various places that protect them from being held accountable. And so at the end of the day, the great challenge for us in large part is how do we eradicate loopholes that protect people like this murderer? And if we, as we take pride, if we fail to address that, then it becomes, we all as a nation become complicit in that. And so, you know, for generations, we have had, you know, issues and problems as it relates to police brutality, as it relates to race. And our nation has been on trial time and time again. We've been on trial. And too often, when we've been on trial for cases that were equally as horrifying the previous generation, like Emmett Hill, or like the poor little girls who were burned up in a church on 16th Street in Birmingham, Alabama, we failed. Our justice system failed in those cases. So I hope that we can succeed on this occasion to bring justice on behalf of a man who didn't deserve to lose his life. And I say all of that, and those are part of the remarks that I probably will make tomorrow during tomorrow's rally. But I also say this, that while we are a great city with a great law enforcement team that has had a history and a heritage of working well with civic leaders, we still have to find ways for us to be better. And we have to find ways for us to be even more transparent and to be even more engaging with our residents so that they know that our law enforcement, they are part of our community. That's partly why they're marching tomorrow. That's why they're engaged, because what affects us affects them. But as policymakers, you know, I shared with you all earlier today, an article on how civilian review boards can further police accountability and improve community relations. And I'd already asked Attorney Jagger to begin looking at some models for review boards. And he, and Attorney Jackson found what I think is a very promising possibility for us to consider out of Fort Lauderdale. And I would that you all, we will share it with you. But these review boards, and while it's not a case of we're looking for something to say we got you, we wanted something, and I wanted something that would allow us to partner with law enforcement. Because when we, the more we reveal and review and show, the more transparent we are, the more trust that we build in our community. And after reading bears and hearing, Attorney Jackson has heard from folks in South Florida, and they have had no problems with the implementation of their review board, in large part because it does not sanction the board to penalize law enforcement themselves. It gives them the power to recommend to the chief or the city manager as it relates to internal investigations, officers who've had problems. So I would encourage you all to read it because he's going to prepare something for our consideration in the coming weeks. As we deal with a national crisis, everyone has a part to do. You know, and a part of me, you know, as I was confronted and looked at this and reviewed what was going on, I thought about what I could do to help enhance and make us better and stronger and more accountable, more transparent. This was what I came away with. So I encourage you all to review it and be prepared for us to discuss it and make some decisions based upon it. And conclusion, I want to say that we, we all have to be tempered. We have to remember that, you know, we are Daytona Beach, we are a great city, what I refer to as the great American destination. People want to come. You know, we have to find ways to be united and just as those young people who came on Memorial Day reacted in some ways that I wasn't happy with or proud of, so too did some of our residents react and respond and say things and have fears that in some ways probably were not realistic. But all of it, all of the reaction is in part a response to what we've experienced during the pandemic. Everybody was on edge. And so as we, you know, process and move forward and try and find some status of normality, we all have to breathe. And I say that because we realize that George Floyd couldn't, and he cried for him. And so while we have our breath, we have to breathe and inhale and remember that all of the things that divide us and had caused us friction, none of them should ever outdistance the things that unite us. None of them. Even, even this, as horrific as it was, at the end of the day, we have more in common than we have that is not in common. Those things we must embrace, and those things that we do not have in common, we have to love each other and work through them. I've often said this even about people in my own family. And we have to say this as residents of the United States of America. We'll get through this because we have to. If we fail to get through this, I fear that we as a nation will be on a steady, slow, slope, declining towards our demise. And you know I'm not a fatalist and I'm not one ever to speak hopelessness into a situation. But we have to get a hold of ourselves individually and collectively. And those are my remarks. Mr. Manager, do you have any comment?
The only thing I'd like to do is encourage everybody to be safe, follow the CDC guidelines as it relates to your activities when you get outside of your home. If you happen to be at the grocery store or wherever, you know, use a mask and be aware of those around you. And with the Lord willing, I'd love to see us all back to work again.
All right. Mr. Jagger?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I've got a couple of housekeeping items which I need some direction on. First of all, as you all know, I've been representing First Step Shelter, or I should say, the City Attorney's Office has been representing First Step Shelter since their inception. And that's been largely done on a loan from the City of Daytona Beach. This commission has adopted prior resolutions authorizing my office to do that. That authorization expires this month. And so if the commission so desires my continued representation of First Step Shelter, we'll need to extend that authorization. So I'd like some direction regarding that, please.
Are you having any difficulty juggling all your responsibilities or can you?
From a workload standpoint, my staff has been terrific. We've picked up all of the needs. The board right now is going through a transition from their shelter management company into self-management. And so they do have some legal issues pending. We can handle it from a workload standpoint. At some point, I do think we'll need to back out of that representation just to maintain some autonomy between that board's operations and the city's operations.
That was my concern. Do you think too that we're going to get into, as more of a self-managed entity, are we going to get to potential conflicts of interest where they're at odds with, you know, something to do with the city and you're kind of trying to serve two masters?
There is always that potential. As part of the initial setup of that corporation, and of course, the mayor has the same situation, the two entities have a unified goal in seeking to provide assistance for homeless persons. But we do have a lease situation between the city and the shelter. We brought in outside counsel to handle that on behalf of the shelter to avoid any conflict. So we have been cognizant of that issue, but it is always an underlying concern that we have been dealing with.
Do you think it's realistic that we could get a volunteer counsel for somebody in the community? About how many, I mean, is it, are you think they're going to need a full-time, 40-hour-a-week attorney? Or do you envision this as something that a law firm in town or a lawyer could undertake as a pro bono task?
I would hope they could find a pro bono attorney to handle that. I've spoken to the executive director for the shelter about that. She's aware of the deadline if you were not to extend my services. So yes, that would be my hope, is that someone would step up and represent the shelter pro bono.
And you think that's realistic?
It is, it would be a part-time obligation. It's certainly not a full-time commitment, maybe 10 to 20 hours, not even that much, maybe 10 hours a week, if that.
Is Bob in your office? Is he part-time with us?
He is part-time with us.
He's an attorney?
You're talking about Mr. Abraham? He works part-time with us. I don't know that he's interested in doing work outside of the City Attorney's Office.
Would you need somebody skilled in nonprofit, like a nonprofit-type attorney, somebody who's skilled in that?
Someone who's, well, much like being the city attorney, you've got to be skilled in a number of different areas, from corporation, everything from employment. Nonprofit agencies do have their unique issues with regard to federal tax filings and tracking donations and expenditure. And that is an expertise which I do not have as, you know, working for the city.
But that kind of thing is more of a conflict.
Right. Much of that is handled by their CPA. But I'm going to provide any oversight in that regard.
I don't mind. If you think you can do it and we don't have an actual conflict right now, then I would be okay with you continuing to do it, but maybe having a phased-out plan where we set a deadline for your kind of withdrawal and give them time to get another attorney or group of attorneys onboard and up to speed. Because it might be something where like a law firm, like a large civil law firm might volunteer to do it, spread the work out among partners or members of their firm who have different expertises, you know? So I'll certainly call some lawyers I know and put some peer pressure on them to volunteer.
Please do, because we're having a hard time and we can't be without counsel, and not now.
Well, with your permission, and I would need a motion on this and take public comment. If you'd like, we could extend the services of the City Attorney's Office for three months, if that's an acceptable timeframe.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the services of a public defender, the city attorney through the shelter for another three months with the understanding that it would be a phasing down provision after that where, you know, First Step Shelter would be looking to replace you and transition out over those three months. Or if they come back and identify a need where they've got to keep you for another month or so after that. But I mean, I think we need to be out of this situation within, say, six months to nine months from now. So my motion would be to extend it for three months. But, you know, the instruction that you are to tell them that they need to have a plan to replace you in three months.
Second motion.
All right. Do we have any speakers in the public?
Do any members of the public want to speak on this item? No. No speakers.
Okay. We have a motion. We have, in a second, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same side? This motion carries. Stick to the vote.
Very good. I'll draft a resolution to that effect and incorporate the same language that we had in the last extension, which also includes a waiver of any potential conflicts.
Thank you. Okay.
The last thing I need to notify the commission about is that the most recent executive order from the governor that was issued today does waive the exception for a virtual meeting of our public body. So starting June 30th, we'll be back to having full, in-person, public meetings unless something changes from the governor's office. But as drafted now and as adopted in the most recent executive order, that exception will sunset on June 30th and we'll be back in business with public meetings.
All right. I have a question. So that means we're going to have more people in the room and everybody is masked. Do we have rules regarding this?
We could be more restrictive. We could impose, we could continue to impose the rules we have. Their governor's order doesn't address any particular preemption issue, so I assume we are not expressly preempted anyway. So that we would have that option to be more restrictive. We could obviously impose limitations within the room if you chose.
So I mean, for me personally, just the most contact that I have with anybody, my business, everything that I've done, I've totally minimized my impact for myself and others. So my personal goal would be to continue that behavior.
Yes. I think we would run into problems with state law if we continued to have a virtual quorum. I think we will have to have commissioners here. We can certainly control what's happening in your room, but state law does require that we have a physical quorum present. We can allow commissioners to appear virtually on a case-by-case basis for exceptional measures as an exceptional condition. as, as an exceptional condition, such as, which we've done in the past, where commissioners have called in and appeared. But that appearance cannot count as part of your quorum. So we still need to have a physical quorum here after June 30th, but we could adopt measures with regard to audience participation.
Mr. Jagger, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner May, but I would like to ask for a dispensation or a vote or whatever is required. I think everyone on the commission knows my personal situation with, you know, we're expecting our child any, pretty much any day now, but more likely than not by the first of July. So that would be, and then I'm probably going to be unavailable for a week or two when that happens. I could certainly probably attend a commission meeting remotely. I would prefer not to attend in person. So I know my absence wouldn't warrant a quorum, but I would like to go ahead and ask permission from my fellow commissioners if they can approve me not appearing in person until the end of July.
I would recommend we handle that, you know, each meeting as it comes. You'll need a finding in regard to each appearance, if there was an extraordinary circumstance to excuse your, your appearance.
Okay. There's not much excuse to my appearance.
Why don't we have the clerk reach out to everybody and see, because I don't, I don't mind coming, but everybody, you know, Paul's not here, and everybody might say they're, you know, they want to do every other or something like that. But, I mean, we have a quorum here tonight, we have four. So, you know, I don't think this is going to be difficult to manage.
No, I don't.
Yeah. But I don't want to put anyone in the spot tonight either, so.
Yeah.
But definitely the audience part of it, I think that's the major concern, is how we keep our, you know, the people that want to come in and participate, how we keep them safe, but still allow their active participation. So, I mean...
I mean, so I want to understand...
Is that every other seat in the audience, does look out in the audience, is that every other seat?
Well, I have a, I have a question. So, and I'm going to be honest, right? So, I mean, I've been here every week, and I've been here every week, and I've sat here. And again, this is the most contact that I've had with people, right? And you're at home, and I'm, I don't want to, I'm going to make it personal, you're at home, but you're comfortable with the rest of us being in here. So my position has always been, what's not good for me, how can I make other people do that also? So my position always, has always been, you know, if I limit, then, then I want the same for you. You don't have to do it, but I don't know if you get to kind of tell everybody else, for me anyway, fill the room up, but you're not here. I'm the one who has to sit here, so are the other commissioners. I'm sitting here. You know, if, if we're going to, if it's going to be like an open access, then, then we're all in it. We're all taking that same risk. That's my position on it.
Well, I don't think anyone's thinking that, that you, you had to be the only one. We can limit the people who come into the, and you're there now because you chose to be there.
Exactly.
You chose, no.
Well, I chose, one second. I chose it because we're also limiting access in the room, and everybody has space. That's why I chose it. If this was a room of 40 or 50 people, no, I wouldn't be here.
Okay, well, we can keep it where it's not a room of 40 or 50 people. And that's the way we continue to do it, as far as I'm concerned.
Aaron, Aaron actually hasn't been at the meetings because of his, you know, home situation, but Aaron, we're not allowing the public into the chambers at all. They sit in the lobby, and there's a podium at each door that comes from the lobby into the chambers. The door that would be on our right is for public, the publicist's seat. The door on the left has a podium, which is for, you know, the Rob Merrells of the world that are, that are presenting. But, you know, they fill out forms and turn them in at the doorway. Ms. Brown and Ms. La Magna, you know, manage the process. But, you know, currently, we have staff in the room, but there is not public in the room.
Yeah, no, what I was saying was, I think we, if we're going to open it up, I was just asking, can we accommodate? How can we accommodate, what rules can we, what can we do? I think we just have to give thought to if, if we open it up more, making sure that we abide by the social distancing things. And I was asking, you know, is every other seat sufficient distance? I mean, just those kind of concerns. But if we're going to just continue to do exactly what we're doing right now, then, you know, I think that, if that's, if that's constitutionally sufficient and legally sufficient for the open meetings, that's fine. I just didn't know if we were thinking about letting more people in the room, how we were going to, you know, how we were going to accommodate that. But if we're just going to keep doing what you guys have been doing for the last couple meetings, and as long as that, that's not changed by any legal requirement for the meetings, that seems fine, if that's working. I don't know if that, there's any problem with it. Seems like it's working to me.
Yep. Mr. Manager, we'll work on a, a plan that's consistent with the CDC regulations or suggestions, and, and bring it back to you so that the commission has that available.
Wait, do we have the authority of Bob to go beyond their recommendations of the CDC? Because I don't want to be, I don't eat in restaurants, I'm not in a place where a 50% capacity. I don't go to those places.
I even minimize my gas usage, so I don't have to expose myself to anything, right? I mean, even tomorrow with the peaceful protest, you know, I'm going to stay in my car, I'm going to be messed up, I mean, all kinds of things. And it's just, it's, it's just very, that, that whole conversation was just very uncomfortable for me.
I'm asking, is it possible for us to go beyond it?
So yes, I believe you could control the attendance in your room. You do have to allow public comment, of course, which we do. We do have to allow the public to hear and participate in the meeting, which we do. So I think our current policy that we're operating under satisfies statutory requirements. The only thing that we're technically not in compliance with statutorily is your attendance of the commission. And this virtual attendance is allowed by the executive orders, and that's what's being repealed as of June 30th.
So can we spread out here?
You have a quorum here now.
Right, right.
So it would be, it would be compliant?
It would be in compliance as long as we granted the exception on a case-by-case basis for allowing each commissioner to appear. So that's a process which is actually embedded in our own governing laws and our charter, is how that appearance can occur.
And I, I suppose I will probably want to come back to the meeting, but not, but if the governor, I don't, I don't have an extenuating circumstance that I can think of. I prefer to continue meeting just as we have, but if the governor is saying that we need to be there unless we have an extenuating circumstance, as far as I'm concerned, Commissioner Delgado is going on maternity, leave for having a child, and he should be for as long as he needs to be able to meet from home. That's the way I would understand that. But I will attend, and I hope, there was no one's intention to make you feel as though we wanted to put people in harm's way. That's certainly not my intention. I want people to be as safe as possible. And I would assume that is, is this what we're doing now, is in accord with the law, we just continue just as, just as we are, and keep a quorum and keep moving. We don't want to have anything other than that that they think we should be doing. All right, any other comment?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, well, this meeting is going to be adjourned. We have public comments for the residents, the meeting is adjourned. Do we have any comments or any speakers?
No, we don't, we don't actually have the public comment section.
Oh, we don't have that?
No.
Okay.
We haven't been doing that.
Well, I think we might want to return that or something, because, well, maybe not, I don't know. We have to talk about that or think about it, Mr. Jisley. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.